Good evening, and thank you for attending the Twinsburg Board of Education regular meeting Wednesday, November 7th, 2018. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Ahold, please call and roll.
Mr. Solora?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
If you could stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's board meeting. I would like to begin tonight by thanking everyone who took the time to vote in yesterday's election. Whether at the polls, early voting, or by absentee, the turnout was higher than in many previous elections, and I feel proud to be a part of the community that showed up in the numbers that we did to make our voices heard, regardless of the side of the issues or the candidates that those voices fell on. I would like to congratulate Christina Rogner on her election of the state senate, representing ourselves in the 27th district, and Mr. Casey Weinstein for his victory as our next state representative for the 37th district. It was a long campaign season, and one where education and school funding were discussed at great length between all candidates who wrote the state senate and the Ohio House of Representatives. Over 20 years ago, the way that Ohio funds its public schools was ruled unconstitutional, and yet here we stand as 2018 nears its close and nothing has changed. We are stuck in a myriad of confusing calculations, ever-changing formulas, caps and guarantees, and the two things that have remained constant is that our leaders at the state level have done nothing to fix the issues, and our local taxpayers have continued to be forced to bear the burden of funding our schools and securing quality education for our students. It is unfathomable to me how our leaders can continue to think that an unequal system of funding, where in our district we receive on average less than $1,600 per student in support of a public education. While I know the wheels of progress spin slow, especially in politics, it is my hope that our newly-elected officials will dive into their new goals, reach across the political party aisles, and bring about the change that they campaigned on these past few months. I look forward to working with them and supporting their efforts on public education, and I would urge those in our community to do the same. In the meantime, our district will continue to make smart financial decisions, ensure that additional expenditures have a direct impact on the students in the classroom and their quality education, and continue to ask for our community's support when the time for our renewal levies, the first of which will be coming at some point next year. On a much lighter but very significant note, I want to thank our girls varsity soccer team and their head coach, John Garber. It has been a great season and a wonderful ride. While the outcome last night was not in our favor, the culture and class exhibited by everyone involved with this team is the epitome of what we stand for. The family bonds formed between teammates and the support from the community that continued to grow as the season went on was unbelievable. I could not be more proud of this team, the coaching staff, and this community. I want to wish the best for the 13 young ladies moving on next year. Your leadership and class will be missed. I look forward to watching those underclassmen and younger players step up and carry on this culture and excitement for years to come. That concludes my report.
Mrs. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Solora. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. We have a packed house, and that means a lot of great things to celebrate, so we thank you for being here this evening. Before we get to celebrating students, there are a couple of things I just want to bring forward to your attention. Board of Education, in addition to a great season for our girls soccer team, you know our cross-country athletes have had a tremendous season as well, and one of our athletes, and that is Ryan Atkins, he was here at our last board meeting, is actually competing this Saturday in the state cross-country meet in Hebron. It was supposed to happen last Saturday, but with all the rain, the track was underwater, and now it's going to snow. So let's hope Ryan can get through it and come back victorious. We're so proud of him. He's a senior this year. He has worn the blue and white for four years, and at the middle school as well, competing on behalf of our school district. And he's just a great student, a great person, supported by some great parents, and we look forward to a very successful Saturday for Ryan. And with the snow coming, and this will be an event he will not soon forget, for sure. So let's hope that all works out fine for him. And of course, our girls soccer team, it goes without saying, they are just a classy bunch of young ladies, and their coaches, John Garber and Jamie Daniels and Robert Harrison, just did such a great job of building a family for the Lady Tiger soccer team. And the last couple of weeks have been just such a great ride for us as a school district, as a community coming together, and if you were at any of the games, you saw just the enthusiasm and the excitement for the girls. And I have to just say that Coach Garber is a class act, and I'm proud that he's a teacher at Twinsburg High School, and I'm proud that he leads our Lady Tiger soccer team. So congratulations to everyone affiliated, our parents, athletic boosters, bus drivers who took the kids who couldn't wait to go on the bus with the kids. Everybody just was one big family, and we were just delighted for their run. It was a history-making season, and they ended up with 21-1 as their record, and I'll take that any day. So congratulations to our girls. Board of Education, this is a really special week in our school district because this is a week that many of our buildings will be celebrating Veterans Day, and this afternoon I had the pleasure of being at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and our kids put on a wonderful concert for our veteran friends and family members, and our PTA decorated the gym, and it was just such a wonderful event. So we had Samuel Bissell's program today. Tomorrow, we will celebrate at RB Chamberlain Middle School, which is always a great program, and involves our orchestra, our band, and our vocal music students. And then on Friday is Bring a Veteran to Lunch Day over at Wilcox Primary School. And we're very proud as a school district that all five of our schools are Purple Star Award schools, which means that we support our military families. And so thank you to our military families for your service to our community and to our country, and thank you, boys and girls, for doing such a great job of welcoming our veterans into our schools. They love to come, and they love to be appreciated. And I had a conversation today with a veteran who was there with his granddaughter, and he said to me, you know, he said, "I'm a Vietnam vet, and when I came back from service, I didn't even get a thank you from anybody." And he said, "So that's why this is so important to me personally, is that as a school community, you understand the service that we provided to our country." And I thought, Jesus, isn't that awesome that he shared a story with me? So thank you, boys and girls, for a wonderful day at Bissell, and we look forward to events the rest of the week that are as heartwarming as the one that happened today. Board of Education, I also want to thank all of the students and families for supporting our Fill the Bus campaign for the Emergency Assistance Center. This year, we collected 5,840 pounds of food. That's a lot of food. And that's up, last year, we collected, we thought it was a lot, 1,716 pounds. So that's a math problem for you guys to do tonight for homework, how many more pounds that we collect this year. But we are so proud of our partnership, and it was at the October 26th football game that we had a Twinsburg City School District bus filled with food, and Nordenia had their bus filled with food, and then Saturday morning, our varsity football team got all the food off all the buses and took it inside and waited for the Emergency Assistance Center. So thank you to Coach Mike Bell and to our football team for helping out on Saturday morning after their football game, and they continue to give back to our community, so we're really proud of that group of guys, too. Mr. Solora mentioned that, you know, the election is behind us, and really, it's an interesting time in Columbus and in Washington DC, this lame-deck sessions that they'll be having, but I want to bring up to everyone's attention something that's really important to our students at Twinsburg High School relative to the election that happened yesterday. If you are a parent of a senior class of 2019, you know that students in the class of 2019 are in a very precarious situation because the legislators have not provided extra options for the class of 2019 to graduate beyond the need for them to have 18 and, of course, points earned. And that's going to put some of our students in a situation that is difficult because that class of students have lived under two different testing systems, the Ohio State test and the Ohio Graduation Test time. And so I am asking the Board of Education and you moms and dads and residents who are watching this tonight, to please reach out to our elected officials and to the State Board of Education, and ask them to make a positive decision for the class of 2019. It is not fair that some of our graduates are going to be stuck in this very difficult situation of having to have those 18 points without any other option to go on to be able to graduate this year. And I will be reaching out to the new Representative Weinstein, as well as Christina Rogner, who's always been a partner to our school district, and asking them to please work with their colleagues in the General Assembly to make some good decisions, and we can't wait very long. We're already into November. By the time they get back together after the holidays, it's January, and we have students who are sort of in the middle waiting to see what's going to happen. So this is a really important one for our kids and for kids in the 12th grade in all Ohio public school districts, so if you are so interested, if you would please reach out and provide them with your opinion about this, I think it's important that we all do that. So that's all of my conversation for this evening. We have a lot of students to celebrate, so I know that Mrs. Johnson's not here again because tonight, her son has parent-teacher conferences, so she had to go and be a parent tonight, and so Mr. Winter is here, and Mr. Winter always does a great job, so he's going to represent Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and we welcome you, Mr. Winter. I know we have a lot of kids to celebrate, so welcome, welcome. Come on up.
Mr. Winter, of Samuel Bissell Elementary School, so it's the principal. So excited to be here, hanging out with you guys tonight to recognize some fine students for their academic accomplishments and for their artistic accomplishments as well. So we're going to start with our Students of the Month, and the Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academic, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set this student apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. Starting in second grade, Grace Boazo from Mr. Robles' class. We're going to work on handshakes tomorrow. From Mrs. Robles' class, excuse me, Alex Ozen. And from Mrs. Estes' class, Regan Rathbone. Ladies and gentlemen, our second graders who are Students of the Month for October 2018. We've got our certificates up, and we're smiling, and we've got our moms and dads and grandmas Last few pictures in. All right, congratulations, everybody. All right, and to our third graders for Students of the Month for October 2018, starting with From Mrs. Kinsella's class as well, Catherine Goldman. From Mrs. Angler's class, Kalen Kye. And from Ms. Potkalinski's class, Kayden Kirkland. All right, ladies and gentlemen, our third grader Students of the Month, October 2018. A little smile, babe. All right, thank you, boys and girls, and congratulations. And as I had said in my opening remarks, you know, we're also going to be recognizing the artistic accomplishments of our students as well, and we'll do that in just a moment. Mrs. Castragano and Mr. Willner here with some fine artists who want to share some of their work with you, but before we get to them, I just wanted to echo what Mrs. Powers had mentioned in her remarks earlier tonight with regard to Veterans Day. It was a fantastic day at Samuel Bissell, and all about 100 veterans came out today, and they enjoyed two wonderful programs. We had some snacks and refreshments provided by our PTA, so thank you very much to them as well for making the day possible. And also, a big shout-out, those two, Mrs. Thomas and Mrs. Petit, our music teachers at Samuel Bissell for their hard work getting the students prepared, and of course, to our fantastic students, they did a great job with both programs. They sang their hearts out. It really was a very wonderful day. So again, just wanted to thank everyone who was involved, and of course, to our veterans, thank you for your service, and thank you for the sacrifices that you have made and your families have made to preserve our freedoms here. So thank you very much. And at this time, Mrs. Castragano, Mrs. Willner, and our fine artists, please come on down.
Well, good evening. We've brought a couple of students here with their artwork. For my students, fall's the time of the year that has a beautiful show of colors, and these students have used trees as a subject matter. They have demonstrated skill in how to use their materials and techniques. They are recognized for their choices, they give meaning to their work, and they have created art based on observation and use of their imagination. Students are going to tell you how they use line, shape, color, and texture in space.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Bryant. This is a fall tree landscape. We use colorful colors to emphasize the autumn time of year. We use crayons or watercolor paint for the sky and ground, pencils for the trees, and construction paper for the leaves. It is a realistic style because we put this space with foreground, middle ground, and background trees that create a feeling of up close and far away. Overlapping branches help make the trees look more natural.
Next, we're going to hear from Dominic.
Hello, my name is Dominic Delcimore. We emphasize up close by drawing our first tree shape all the way up to the top of the paper with detail like their heart texture. Next, we drew a tree further away by making it thinner and shorter with less detail. Then we made a very small tree with no detail to look far away. Really small leaves were blue on the farther tree. Compared to the merle tree, which is a little bit bigger, leaves in the foreground tree has the biggest leaves, but not really big at all. All of these techniques together help create movement and unity. In the other words, wow, that looks real. The most fun part of this project was drawing in the background because I love going from light to dark with the colors. The most fun part of this project was seeing the final product.
Very good, very good. And Mia, Mia's our second grader.
Hello, my name is Mia Sorak. This is a cubism landscaped tree. It is cubism still because we use mostly straight kinds of line. This is why the shape is mostly rectangles, triangles, and squares. We used warm, dark colors to emphasize the kind of view. I filled my space by drawing the tree branches to the edges of the paper, put a sidewalk at the bottom, and added animals like dogs and cats for details.
Audi couldn't make it. This is Audi's picture. He also said that he added animals at the bottom to help fill the space. So this is Riley. She's in second grade, and she's going to speak to you about her artwork.
Heather Galler is the artist who inspired this project. She uses bright colors and patterns. I use crayons for the patterns and watercolors for the background. I put a cat on top of the barn instead of a rooster because cats are my favorite animal.
There is Kevin from third grade.
This is a drawing of sunflowers painted by Vincent Van Gogh. It's a picture of sunflowers in a vase. I made this by using short brushstrokes to make the vase and walls. I used two shades of yellow, brown, and green pieces of blue paper to the paper for the petals, pollen, and the stems. Together, I used these things to put together this piece of work thanks to my art teacher, Mrs. Ozen.
And this is Olivia from third grade.
We did a standard dance call in school. I had fun doing this artwork. Day of the Dead starts in the beginning of November. People in Mexico celebrate this holiday. To make it look old, we pinkled it up and smeared black paint on it and let it dry. To put the glitter on, we put blue on the places that we wanted to have the glitter, and we put the glitter before we let the blue dry.
Boys and girls, why don't you hold up your artwork so everybody can take a picture, well, put it in front of your chest, okay? Down here, you want to see your beautiful faces, too. And Mr. Solora sure has a pin for a holiday as well. You know, congratulations, boys and girls. You know, art is so fun, and you learn so much, don't you, about shapes and sizes and colors, and how you can take a look at the world and interpret it through your own eyes. And so I want to thank Mrs. Willner, Mrs. Castragano, for always being such great leaders in the classrooms and inspiring our young artists to do such fantastic work, and congratulations. Let's give our young artists another round of applause. Thank you very much, boys and girls.
And before I invite Mr. Resup here, principal at RBC Middle School, I just want to make one comment. In addition to cultivating fine artists at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, a big push for us is also writing across the curriculum, and that includes writing within gym, and writing within music, and writing within art as well. So I think that was a fantastic example of that. So great job, kids. And if we can all just hang tight, as we call Mr. Resup here from RBC, because he's going to highlight the accomplishments of some fantastic students at his school.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Good evening, Board. Well, first of all, students at Bissell, your parents will probably want to hang your artwork upon the refrigerator when you get home, but I'm willing to pay money for your artwork after we leave here. So you have a decision to make. Give it to your parents, hang on the fridge, or we can negotiate a price, because that is unbelievable artwork. That was not what I was doing when I was your age, so it's really, really incredible the education you are getting at Bissell. And I'm here to celebrate some RBC students tonight who are also incredible. People say all the time, I tell them I'm a middle school principal, they look at me like, "That must be the worst job in the world." And I'm like, "No, why do you say this?" Incredible group of students, incredible group of staff, teachers at RBC. And so the criteria, to make a long story short, to be a Student of the Month at RBC is you have to be really incredible because it's just a school full of really incredible students. So these are incredible students from seventh grade. First, we have Lalea Fucknow. Lalea, I've been saying it all day, but it's like a tongue twister for me. By the time they hit RBC, they get a lot better at shaking hands. Okay, seventh grader, if you could just stay there, we'll bring up our eighth graders. And Avi Chandru. I think seven out of eight is a record for us, so if you guys could, yeah, hold up so families can get some pictures. All right, how about another round of applause? All right, how about another round of applause? And a couple of building highlights for us. We're starting our concert series, so check your calendars. Our choir concert December 3rd, band concert December 10th, and orchestra December 7th. Middle schoolers do a fantastic job at their concerts. We have a concert tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., our Veterans Day concert. If you know a veteran, invite them to stop by. Arrive around 7:45 in the north parking lot at RBC, and we would love to have them at our concert. The reason we don't typically have many students at our board meetings is because they're so busy with activities. So one of the fall highlights for me was our athletic program. Now, we had 222 students, or about a third of the school, involved with a fall sport. And we know being involved with athletics and other activities really helps kids make good choices as they go through their middle school and high school years. Our football team had combined winning record 10-6. Volleyball team had a winning record 19-9. Our boys won the Strongzo Invitational. For the first time ever, our boys and girls cross-country teams won the same Invitational. They both won the Legends. So that was really an exciting morning of announcements when they did that. So we're very excited about our arts, our athletics. And I wanted to highlight some of our academic achievements today, too. And it was, three years ago, I was at the board meeting, and we had to present our school report card data, which at the time was not what we wanted it to be. And to me, one of the most important areas of our state report card is what's called progress, or how much growth we're making from one year to the next, with your goal being that your students would make one year's growth. So as you can see, if this, 2014-15 school year, we were not doing very well. Our overall progress was graded as an F. Gifted students, F. Students in the lowest 20th percentile, students with disabilities, were all rated an F. And they gave you a color to mark it. I call this the C of red here. And this is based on a three-year average. And so to get out of this kind of situation, not only does it take a lot of work, it takes several years to change things. And so we presented, a little over three years ago, our plan to get out of this. And change is hard for people, and it's emotional, and because the people at Chamberlain are dedicated, but they didn't want to continue this. So let's fast forward, and we knew it was going to take several years. Three years later, our overall is now an A. So our three-year average is an A. Our gifted is an A. Our lowest 20th percent, our students who struggle with learning, is an A. And our students with disability right now is a B. And that green color is where we want to be, which means, what do these numbers mean? Like this 8 here for overall? It's like, our students are making about eight times the expected growth in meeting that year's growth than the average school in the state. And so the flip in three years has been incredible. And we've changed the way we grade, we changed the way we teach, we changed the way we look at missing assignments, the way we service our students who are gifted, the way we service our students who have disabilities. And it's led to radical change. One of the things you don't see on the state report card is the single-year letter grade. And so you can see in the single year, we are straight A's, and even our students with disabilities is over three times the expected growth. So we're excited about what we're doing with the arts, we're excited with what we're doing with athletics, and I think I have one more slide. But what we really are most proud of right now, let's go ahead, one more, is, oh, you deleted the wrong, all right, that's fine. I think they get the point. But what we're most proud of is how we are meeting the needs of our students academically, and the incredible growth that they're making, more than one year's growth, no matter who they are. We said, no matter who walks through our door, we are there to make sure they learn, no matter their skin, their skin color, religion, where they're coming from, it doesn't matter. If they have a disability, if they're gifted, we are going to teach every child. And we're doing that at a very, very high level. And so I did this, had to do this three years ago, and I said, you know, when I get the chance at a board meeting, I'm going to get up and say, look what we've done over the last three years. So thank you for your time. And I will turn it over to... Any reports from my colleagues?
Superintendent Powers had to step away for a minute, so she'll be back.
I've got one from the Business Advisory Council continues to meet.
Thank you, though, very much, Mr. Reese. I know the board appreciates your efforts in turning that around, and it definitely
For those that aren't familiar, this is a group of business, civic, and school officials
can be seen out there.
that meet representing a variety of different disciplines, and they're receiving updates,
So thank you very much.
very positive updates about the Twinsburg Academy and continued growth of that program.
Well, now is the time. I appreciate everybody coming. You are more than welcome to stay. Mr. Aho has a very interesting five-year forecast presentation that, you know, if you
Thank you, Mr. Solora. Any other committee reports?
would enjoy it.
So typically, as the board's legislative liaison, I typically report out at this time.
Otherwise, I appreciate you coming, and I'll let you get back to your homework and dinner. Thank you.
Temper ice cream.
And so I'll echo what Mr. Solora spoke of earlier with respect to, which will now be Senator Roganer and Representative Weinstein. I have been in contact with both of them today to offer both of them congratulations, but to also let them know that we have business and work to do. And specifically, I'll be working with them on, hopefully, some legislation to come when they take office in January, to pick up where we left off with respect to House Bill 87. Up until that time, we'll be in the lame duck session, so there's going to be a lot of activity going on, and I'll be keeping my eye on what's happening at that time. And specifically, with respect to charter school accountability, there's a work group that is chaired by Senator Lehner around developing measures and accountability around online charter schools. It's unlikely that any decision will be made, or any plan will be in place by the end of the lame duck session, but nonetheless, I'll be keeping my eye on that. And again, I'm looking forward to working with our new representatives in the General Assembly when they convene in January.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Any other? Concludes committee reports. So moving on to administrative report, Mr. Aho. I'll turn the meeting over to you for your five-year forecast.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a five-year forecast. This is something that we have to do every year. In the fall, we do the five-year forecast for the next five years, and then in the spring, it gets updated. So this is basically the fall one. This is where we have to do the five years out. Five-year forecast, like I said, it's, the state auditors and the ODE are the ones that kind of put the framework out there for it. It is on the ODE's website. You can go to the website, and there it shows you where, you know, the information is, how to read the five-year forecast. And then down there, it actually shows you the link to the five-year forecasts. You can see any district's five-year forecast, any of the 612 school districts in Ohio, so you can compare them and look at them. Also, two in there in a separate file is the different assumptions and notes to the five-year forecast. One of the things with the five-year forecast that is right on the website, the first arrow, it talks about the purpose and the objectives of the five-year forecast, and this is right from the ODE. It's really, it's more of a tool to engage the public, you know, to, you know, think forward, you know, and then, you know, then to come up with the financial issues, look what's facing the district, you know, what are some potential problems that might be on the horizon, you know, to start the discussions early to solve those problems before, you know, before they're there, you know. You do it well enough in advance, and they're easier to take care of than set away until the last minute. Another part of that, which is probably a bigger piece of it, is, you know, for the ODE, is it also is a tool for the state auditor and the ODE to recognize districts that are having financial problems. You know, if they can see a district having a financial problem several years out, they're going to contact those districts, you know, and ask you, what's your plan? You know, we see that you're having, you know, looking at some difficulty, you know, are you guys ready to address that? You know, some districts, you know, find different ways to address that, either through some expenditure trimming or finding, you know, different revenues. And then lastly, the five-year forecast is part of the 412 certificate. And what that is, is basically you have to, you know, be able to say like, yeah, I've got money moving forward to pay the bills. So it's a solvency ability that they're looking for. And really, the five-year forecast is more of a barometer than an exacting model. You know, it basically shows which way the, you know, the financial pressures are, you know. If they're, you know, an immediate storm on the horizon, you'll know that, or if it's, you know, not, if it's calm and whatever, you know, you kind of get the feel that way. That's kind of a, an idea there. One of the things for Twinsburg is we really had pretty flat revenues back in '07. We had $43 million, and you can see that line is pretty flat going forward. You know, through all this timeframe from '07 through '18, it really hasn't gone up very much. You know, there in '18, you can see there's the revenues from last year. You know, there was a bump up because of the latest levy that was passed. And really, what causes a lot of this, you know, the revenues not to grow or anything, you know, like a city has income tax, and that will grow as jobs and that grow. But for school districts, they put some legislation out there. There's House Bill 920 that caps the amount of revenues districts receive off of a levy. Once the levy's passed, there is no increase, and, you know, to, so to speak. You know, if you brought in new housing or whatever, there would be some, you know, increase because of new construction. But as far as like a house that's already built, the tax that goes on that house is the same tax going forward forever on that one levy. Also, House Bill 66 is the one, that's the House Bill that eliminated the tangible personal property tax and brought down the, brought about the cat tax. You know, and of course, we know that that's going away, states peeling that back. And then the state funding, there's been a bunch of different models, and there's caps and guarantees, you know, you can't get more than this month, this much money, or you can't get less than that much money. I mean, there's all these amazing calculations that the state does, and they come up with these numbers.
Storm on the right.
Just conserve energy.
Yeah. This way, you can come back next, in two weeks, and do it again. Do it a different way. Here we go. Go through that one all. Go to the bar chart. And that's the House Bill 66, that's the effect of that. Looking back to 2010, there was $7.8 million. That's all going away. You know, that was the cat tax that the states, that they were going to use a large portion of that to fund schools, well, they kind of forgot those promises. And basically, it's going to go to zero. By the end of our five-year forecast, we will receive no money from the state for any kind of cat tax TPP reimbursements. That will be zero. This is the, basically, a state funding model. And on the state funding model, what they do is they have this calculation on the left side, which is the basic funding, well, then they come up with all these other calculations, state share, all this other stuff. And our calculation is, what we receive is on the right-hand column. Well, the right-hand column is like $5 million. Left-hand column, where the calculation is, is $9.1 million. So there's a difference, and that's what, one of the things you heard us talk about is the cap. So because of all these changes in the funding models, you know, as they change a funding model, they say, oh, we're not going to let anybody get any more money or any, because that might, I don't know, or any less money. So they kind of want everybody to kind of be held to the same spot that they were. Well, we've been held to the same spot time and time again, and the result is $3.2 million that we don't receive from the state, even though they have a funding model that says we should receive more. There you can see the $9 million and the $3 million that's capped. This is basically what the five-year forecast looks like. One thing that gets kind of confusing is when there's a levy that's out for renewal, it goes down to the bottom lines. So way down at the bottom is this, there's $2 million, $4 million, $4 million, $4 million, which is right there. And that actually gets subtracted from the top up there, and that's the real estate taxes. So once the levy's renewed, it'll go back up to the top. You know, so there's some stuff that you have to know when you're looking at these, and how all this works. It does get a little confusing over time, but, you know, that's basically the gist of it, how that goes up and down. So the old, if you looked at last year's five-year forecast, we didn't pull out the levy, but now it's pulled out, so that number, that real estate number will be different because of that. You know, one of the things with schools is, you know, we're a service organization. Eighty-five percent of our expenditures are for teachers and staff. You can see 61% for salaries, 24% for benefits. You know, we're putting people in the classrooms, you know, a large percentage of our dollars go in the classrooms. And then also, too, with the support staff, with the bus drivers and, you know, the assistants and the playground people, and, you know, all the people in the buildings, secretaries, you know, all those folks, you know, keep this whole business working. So that's kind of the model there, and that was last year's from 2018, their expenditures. You know, one of the things that's always been a district goal for quite a while is to be fiscally responsible. One of the measures that we keep an eye on is there's a CUP report out. For Twinsburg, we're at $10,933 for our per pupil expenditures. And you can see there are similar districts. You know, we're well below all that. You know, we're well below all that. We're actually below state average in other similar districts, and then many of our neighbors are below. You know, a big difference, you know, how we're below it. So we're always, you know, focused on saying, you know, living within our means, being fiscally responsible. You know, and some of that, too, is, is the, you know, the funding restrictions that we felt over time. You know, the House Bill 920s and the House Bill 66, you know. So we've had to live with that, and then, you know, one of the results is we do scrutinize our expenditures and keep them, you know, lower than surrounding districts. You know, sometimes he will ask us, you know, what have you done, you know, lately for expenditures and whatever, whatever. Several years ago, there was a, the operational change plan that cut $2.6 million salaries and benefits. At that time, we were having, you know, a little financial issues. You know, the budget was getting tight, expenditures were exceeding revenues. So had to put that plan into effect and made some cuts. Also, at that time, a new levy was passed, a nine point, a 4.9 mill levy was passed, and some other adjustments were made, and basically a $7 million impact to the FY13 budget. So, you know, we're always looking at making, you know, appropriate cost reductions when we need to, and, you know, watching our dollars. You know, fortunately, over time, we've had a lot of good support in the community. You know, one of the things that we're very aware of is that this is a partnership with the community. You know, we're asking the community to help fund the schools. You know, the grandparents, you know, are helping to pay for their, their grandkids, you know, and the families pay for their kids. You know, and then they do expect, you know, a high level of service. You know, one of the places, you know, to kind of put a plug in for the quality profile, if you want to see some of the, some of the great work that the school district's doing is the quality profile out there. There's 24 pages of information in that quality profile that just talks about all the great stuff that's going on, from Wilcox up through the high school. Just a, just a bunch of good information in that quality profile. And that can be got off, can be found on the district's website also. You know, some of the other things to, you know, to, you know, to keep the ball rolling and enhance services, you know, recently, they, you know, the districts has done the Chromebook initiative. You know, basically, it's the high schools now one-to-one. Expanded preschool offerings, some new classrooms down at Wilcox for preschool. The Makerspace environments, those are in all the buildings, those are, those are great. You know, additional staffing for special needs students. A lot of times, they're required, you know, to bring on additional staff as the numbers change. Those are requirements that certain ratios have to be met and kept. And then some of the other services, just the PBIS, the counselors at Beach Brook to help, you know, just in the all, all-around general well-being of the students. You know, over time, there's been challenges. You know, like I said before, the House Bill 920, which basically puts a limit on the amount of local taxes the district receives. Like I said before, there's been a bunch of different iterations of the funding models in the tangible personal property phase outs. You know, there's been like, what, four or five, there's been four different models of the funding formulas over the last 10 years. You know, there again, state legislated, you know, House Bill 66, you know, eliminating the tangible personal property tax collection. It was $9.8 million in 2004. You know, by the time this forecast wraps through, it's going to be zero. And then also, too, the, you know, the casino revenue's been talked about, you know, with all these casinos and that going into Ohio. Well, that kind of gets filtered through, and fiscal year of '17, we received $203,000, and last year, we received $210,000, which is well appreciated, but doesn't really go that far. You know, something, another challenge that you have to be aware of, too, are the renewal cycle. We have two emergency levies that are coming up in the next several years. Next year, we'll probably have to get the emergency levy, the $4 million emergency levy addressed. And then, like, a year or so after that, we have the other emergency levy that's on the horizon. That's basically the five-year forecast. You know, what goes into developing the five-year forecast? You know, instead of drilling down through all the numbers and looking at, you know, what line, and this line is that number, and, you know, it's better to talk, I think, more philosophically about the five-year forecast, what goes into developing it, the challenges, and how we basically formulate it. So that's my version of the five-year forecast for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Aho.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments. So if you look at the cap number of what we're receiving and divide it by roughly what our average is, we're looking at about $1,400 per student received from the state where we're spending $10,900. So the rest of those dollars, which the state, you know, has a, has a duty and a responsibility to fund public education, is not happening here in our district at least. And it's through the support of the community, unfortunately, that, you know, we have to pick that up and bear that burden. And recent discussions down at the state, it's been said that, well, if the community will support it, then why would the state pick those dollars up? And that's, that's very frustrating to see. And it's one of the reasons why I know, Mr. Curtis, you're working closely with Representative Roker now for the next month and a half until she becomes a senator. And that's why we kind of, we're asking for your push, as we all will, to our newly-elected representatives to, let's start turning this process around. It's been talked about for years and years, and there's time now to make change. So I appreciate the input that you have on this part. I do find the, your fourth slide with the flat revenue since 2007 is a very interesting slide, because we all know, as expenses go up, and we're talking with such a large budget that we have as a district, inflation, you know, cost of living increases and things like that, that are just natural, natural with energy costs, medical health benefits, and things like that. Those increase every single year. The state flat for a period of 10 years essentially until the new levy was done just goes to show how much work and time that you and the administration have put into in previous boards to make sure that we haven't, haven't been in the red and broke current. So I appreciate that.
Some of the things that have gone on are the House Bill 264 projects, energy conservation projects, you know, Chad's real active purchasing through the consortiums, you know, his maintenance and PI budgets and all those, a lot of dollars run through those and using the consortiums. You know, everything's, you know, they, these, the vendors know that if they go through the consortium, they're going to get business from schools. So they do sharpen their pencils and give us some good pricing on it. And Chad's been real aggressive at using those pricing, which is helpful.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And just, I know this has been spoken about in other, in previous meetings, but just the highlights, it's kind of hard to read from here, but it says that we've been ranked, the high schools have been ranked 46 out of 886 Ohio schools, and 1,152 in the U.S. have 23,000 high schools, putting us in the top 5%. So just wanted to repeat that because that's, it's pretty promising for our schools and it's great rankings. And I, and, I mean, I see the big old thank you up there, but I just wanted to, I couldn't read it very well from here, but I just wanted to highlight that again.
Right.
And I would just, you know, mention again, thank you for a thorough report. I think we've talked about TPP since I was in kindergarten, it seems. And it doesn't, you know, it doesn't get any better. And I think what is probably understated, but you mentioned in the multiple funding formulas, is just the continuous stream of confusion and such. When people were talking TPP, they're like, oh, I heard it's going to be repealed. We can't forecast on that. And we said that, and it happened, and, you know, here we are. We weren't, you know, chicken littles running around. We were saying, this is going to happen, we have to plan. And, you know, you talk about a five-year forecast, and most companies, you know, tell Wall Street one thing, and another thing happens three months later, six months later. And we're expected to hold to a forecast of five years. So that's why we updated. It's, it's very concise, but, you know, there's still a lot of confusion out there. So, you know, I encourage people to continue to read and listen, and, you know, when you have an award-winning treasure, you tend to, you know, follow his opinion a little bit, a little bit more than what you're hearing in the wind. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll, you know, just kind of cap that off by just making sure that the public understands that, you know, even in addition to, you know, what Chad does with respect to, you know, securing services and leveraging, you know, good services at a reduced cost, the district always seeks out, you know, other grant dollars to help offset, you know, anything that we might otherwise have taken out of the general fund. But in addition to that, the value added that we've received in, you know, getting things without paying a whole lot of money. I think that oftentimes, that gets lost in, you know, inside of looking at, you know, things from a financial standpoint. And then lastly, it is becoming increasingly difficult to provide quality education at a high level. So Mrs. Davis just pointed out our ranking. But every building in the district has received some recognition with respect to excellence in providing services to students and the community. And, you know, that costs money. Now, while at the same time that we're continuing to do that, Marty pointed out that we're lower than the state average with respect to what we spend on a per pupil basis. And that doesn't happen by accident. We're extremely conscientious about all of the dollars that we spend. We're extremely conscientious about all the personnel that we choose to hire and for what purpose. And yet, and still, we still are able to stay below the state average and also below our neighbors', you know, with respect to per pupil expenditure. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, the community understands that we get it. You know, the funding formula is probably going to change in the next biennium. I am encouraged with Bob Cup and the working group that is currently underway now, that they're having serious conversations around finally looking at school funding and really trying to bring a definition to what is high-quality education and what does that cost? What should it cost? It's an extremely difficult proposition to take on, but the fact of the matter is they're doing it. So, you know, stay tuned, but we're going to continue working hard to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck. And I appreciate Marty for providing a lot of guidance around the decisions that we make.
One, one quick additional comment, I think, that sometimes gets overlooked. We talk about TPP quite a bit and loss and the impact that it's had on our general operating budget. A lot of times, we don't include the loss that we've realized from that in regards to our permanent improvement levy.
Right.
You know, so just in case, you know, for information purposes, we have a permanent improvement levy in this district that brings in revenue for us to purchase buses, do some large projects, you know, things like that, that we can, you know, that are permanent improvements, you know, not, not easily consumable items. And, you know, we have lost since the removal of the tangible personal property tax about half a million dollars annually from that. So it's not something that gets talked a lot about, but is that we're in the process now of reevaluating and updating our facilities assessment that was done back in 2015, and we're holding these strategic action team meetings to, you know, push us into the future and come up with our strategic plan, you know, with the community's involvement. I think it's important to realize that and to, you know, not only realize the effect that that, negative impact that has had on us, but also to realize that we're still working within that. You know, we had a half a million dollars cut from a $2.1 million stream, you know, so almost 25% loss in revenue on that, and we're still able to accomplish, keep our buses safe, keep a, keep a safe rotation on the buses, keep our students warm, safe and dry, address, you know, heating, cooling issues, roofing issues, paving and things like that. You know, that solely, you know, Chad has had a lot of impact on that in your negotiations. But that's important to realize, too, that not only did we lose TPP money in the general budget and revenue source, but as well as in the permanent improvement levy, so.
Good point.
Any other comments? Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Marty.
You're welcome.
As always, full of information and appreciate the efforts that you do.
Thank you.
Moving on to item H, as I don't see any blue cards, Marty, remonstrance?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Item H, without objection from my colleagues, I will read items H1 through 4. H1, resolve that Twins Report of Education approves the following meeting minutes. Regular meeting of October 3, 2018, as sent to the board under separate cover. H2, resolve that Twins Report of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of September 2018. Bank reconciliation, general fund financial summary report, and financial report by fund, as sent to the board under separate cover. H3, resolve that Twins Report of Education accepts the check register for the month of September 2018. The total, including payroll, is $4,839, $4,839,367.26. H4, resolve that Twins Report of Education approves the five-year forecast for school year 2019 to 2023, as sent to the board under separate cover. Have a motion to accept items H1 through 4 as read.
Second.
Ms. Davis, the second.
Second.
Mr. Felber, any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabo?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. Items H1 through 4 passes 5-0. Objection from my colleagues, read items I-1 through 3. I-1, resolve that Twins Report of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I-2, resolve that Twins Report of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And I-3, resolve that Twins Report of Education accepts supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Have a motion to accept items I-1 through 3.
So moved. Mr. Curtis, second.
Second.
Ms. Davis, discussion?
Now, just noting, congratulations to bus driver Karen Miller on her January retirement of 25 years of service to the district, so much appreciated. That's a, I'd like to know how much that is, Chad, in miles. My next book, no. That's a lot, that's a lot of miles.
That's a lot of miles, a lot of kids picked up, too, for 25 years, that's amazing.
At least a quarter mile.
Mr. Aho, please call roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabo?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. I-1 passes, or I-1 through 3, 3 passes 5-0. No objection from my colleagues, I'll read items J1 through 17. Resolve, J1, resolve that Twins Report of Education confirms the appointment of Mr. Mark Durbin to the position of trustee for the Twinsboro Public Library for the term January 1, 2019, and ending at December 31, 2025, per the attached exhibit. J2, resolve that Twins Report of Education accepts a donation of $75 from Capella University to 25 South Sixth Street, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55402, for Wilcox Primary School, purchased supplies for STEAM activities, per the attached exhibit. J3, resolve that Twins Report of Education accepts a donation of $264.18 from Chipotle Mexican Grill, 1401 Wincup Street, Denver, Colorado, 80202, for the Twinsboro High School Drama Club, per the attached exhibit. J4, resolve that Twins Report of Education accepts a donation of books from Great Minds, 55M Street SE, Washington, DC, 20003, for Wilcox Primary School. 292 books are valued at $2,840 and correlate to the first grade foundations units, per the attached exhibit. J5-
J-5, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation of $90.04 from Shopperoo, 322 Ridge Street, San Francisco, California, 94107, for Samuel Bissell Elementary School to be used to purchase student incentives, per the attached exhibit. J-6, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation of four basketball rims valued at $280 from the Twinsburg Rec Base Basketball League, PO Box 821, Twinsburg, Ohio, 44087. The rims were installed in the gymnasium of George G. Dodge Intermediate School, per the attached exhibit. J-7, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the following list of books to be deleted from inventory upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The list is printed in the agenda. J-8, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items to be deleted from inventory, per the attached exhibit. J-9, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the below listing of items to be deleted from the inventory, items listed on the agenda. J-10, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopt a contract with HI Translating and Interpreting to provide language interpreters on an as-needed basis for 2018-2019 school year. Invoicing will be per project. Hourly rate is $50 per hour with a two-hour minimum, with an additional charge of 55 cents per mile as sent to the board under separate cover. J-11, resolve that the Twins Board of Education adopts the Title I parent involvement policy that was approved at the Title I meeting held on October 18, 2018, is sent to the board under separate cover. J-12, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the Twinsburg High School seniors Javante Bray and Kane Pogansik to exercise Board of Education Policy Number 5111, optional tuition free education F, and remain students at Twinsburg High School through the end of 2018-2019 school year. J-13, resolve that the Twins Board of Education, according to Board Policy 9211, acknowledges the following district's support organizations: Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, Twinsburg Band Boosters and Twinsburg Orchestra Boosters. J-14, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approve the contract with Maria City School District for one Twinsburg High School student to attend the J&amp;G Snow School for the 2018-2019 school year. Billing will be through the SF14D reporting as sent to the board under separate cover. J-15, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a memorandum of understanding between Cleveland State University and the Twinsburg City School District, effective August 2018 through August 2022, to place clinical licensure candidates needing classroom experience in district classrooms for the purpose of participating in experiences as required for licensure, as sent to the board under separate cover. J-16, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the affiliation agreement with Valdez Workdays Dietic Internship Incorporated to allow for graduate and undergraduate students to be placed in the district to complete their internship requirements for graduation, as sent to the board under separate cover. And item J-17, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves DK Smith Law LLC for legal representation during the 2018-2019 school year. Services will be billed at $250 per hour, as sent to the board under separate cover. I have a motion to accept items J-1 through 17 as read.
Sumo.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis? Any discussion?
I guess, it always falls to me as the elder to explain the, why is there a trustee for the public library? The school district is the taxing authority for the library. So as a matter of formality, when they're doing appointments to the board or changes to the board, it comes to our meeting. We're not really making a decision, but it's just a formality. So that's why you're seeing a trustee for the Twinsburg Public Library. On our agenda, you'll see that from time to time.
You just have, you just have the best speech.
It's just down.
Ready to go.
I had to pull that one out.
Appreciate that.
And then, let's see. There was one other. I think that was it.
I'd like to thank Capella University, Chipotle, Great Minds, Shopperoo and Twinsburg TRBL for their donations. As always, we would not be able to do what we do as a district without the support of the community and the many businesses and organizations within it. Their donations are always greatly accepted and appreciated.
Superintendent Powers, can you provide a little bit more clarification on J-12 regarding the circumstances around the two students?
Sure, Will. Thank you, Mr. Curtis. So Board Policy 5111 provides an opportunity for seniors at the high school whose family would move out of the community after the beginning of the school year to remain as students at Twinsburg High School through commencement. And so these two students' families have now moved out of Twinsburg, different locations, and have exercised their right through the board policy to request that you approve them to remain here at the high school through graduation.
If I'm not mistaken, transportation is on the parents' right.
That is correct. Right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other discussion?
No, just a quick comment. Wrapping up fall sports, and it's been very exciting and very, just quite a ride with these sports. And just good luck to all the kids and athletes and coaches who are approaching the winter sports coming up as well.
Mr. Aho, please call roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Items J-1 through 17 pass 5-0. Moving on to Ms. Aladeas and my colleagues, with any comments from Ms. Aladeas?
That's my comment, I was a little early, but.
No. I just had one that I was referring to, Mrs. Powers could be here. Myself, Mrs. Powers, Jen and Norm from Curriculum and Business Instructor, I believe it's her title, Donna Houston, traveled to Akron. There is a program called The Next Generation Leadership Through FART, and it was a presentation that we were invited to hear primarily about the Akron schools and what they're doing with, more of a college career track-based system. And very fascinating, it was a four-hour program. They, I guess the Mecca to go find out how this works is down in Nashville, where they've been running this program for 12 years. And very fascinating. It relates to Twinsburg as we have this academy in its second year, and we're actually probably fairly down the road and ahead of many of the districts that were there to hear the presentation. It doesn't mean we're going to stop everything and change to go to that program, but it was very interesting how in the freshman year of high school, they designated, I can't remember the name of the high school, was it North, North High School in Akron? That they pilot this and they're going to be rolling this out to the high schools. The freshmen are learning all types of soft skills and how to interview and how to, you know, start to think about a career and college readiness and so forth. By their sophomore year, wall-to-wall, meaning every single student in those schools are picking a track, whether it be healthcare, IT, manufacturing, whatever it might be, doesn't mean that means where they have to work. But very interesting program, and as our academy continues to engage with the 60-plus partners that have already stepped up and starting to look at our soft skills training with the requirements of the business community, as well as, you know, how that relates to academia, it's just very interesting. And I'm not sure if I glossed over too much, or is that, are there gaps? Do you remember that, from that program?
I think the gist of it is, that program wouldn't work and neither would ours without the partnerships.
Right, absolutely. That's a very good point, yeah.
And Akron's been working on this model for several years and is a huge proponent of the program that we saw. And it would be interesting to travel to Nashville potentially to see how an academy might work different than ours. One of the things that we're looking at at the high school is to see how we might want to fine-tune our academy to provide opportunities for students who are interested in a new honors diplomas. And so how might that look and what opportunities can our partnerships with local businesses help in that regard? So we continue to look at that. We've been meeting and thinking outside the box, talking about how we can help our young students understand and our high school students understand about the world of work and not being direct, but giving them opportunities to figure out what they want to do by immersing them in some internship shadowing experiences that immerse them in that regard. So this is an exciting thing. We're pretty proud about what's happening at Twinsburg High School, very grateful to Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce and all of our local businesses. And now if we can hook it to the honors diplomas, that even makes the program stronger.
And coming back full circle to your opening remarks in your superintendent's report regarding to graduation pathways, there were some representative, was it the deputy superintendent?
Associate superintendent.
Associate superintendent from ODE, which is, you know, talking about walking into the lion's den of educators. There was comment about graduation pathways and programs like this and would it, you know, secure and open up additional pathways? And it was kind of the wait-and-see, we're working on a response, but at least they were there and they showed up and came from Columbus. So that was at least positive to be able to engage at that level that we don't always get to see the second-in-command at the Ohio Department of Education, so.
Thank you for being there. It was an interesting afternoon, no doubt.
I wanted to just take a moment to thank my colleagues and the superintendent and Marty for attending the all-boards dinner at the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. For those who don't know, every year we have an all-boards dinner where we host the boards of education of the member districts to come to the Career Center to have dinner before our regular board meeting. And at that time, they also have an opportunity to look at one of the programs and kind of kick the tires, if you will, just to kind of see what's going on, see what's new, what's happening. And they also have an opportunity to interact with students from our district who attend the CBCC and kind of get their story and kind of understand what their experience has been at the CBCC. Mr. Mangus, the superintendent, also has an opportunity to kind of give an overview of what's happening at the Career Center and maybe what's on the horizon. And we also take opportunities for faculty and other individuals to kind of give highlights of programs that are happening at the center. It's just a good opportunity for the board to come and see what's happening because they often hear information that I'm giving in terms of updates, but very rarely are they able to kind of come on the center and kind of take a look for themselves. So the center really appreciates it, it's a really big deal for them, kind of like an open house for them, if you will, just to make sure that, you know, our member districts see that they're getting the best value for their buck and also just for the communities to understand that we are connected, that we do support each other, and that we want to make sure that we're doing good. So thanks for, thanks for attending.
Always enjoyed being able to get out there. I thought the story of the young lady who spoke, you know, who was going through the dental hygiene program, who actually decided that that was the route she wanted to go after her orthodontist was able to give her a little bit more confidence and the fact that she was able to work an intern there over the summer, I thought was an amazing story. We're always fortunate to be a part of that because there's a lot of great educational opportunities and doors open for our students in this district because we're part of that one, CBCC. So thank you. Any other comments? Moving into that, we do have a need for an executive session this evening, so I will make a motion at 8:24 that the Board of Education enters into executive session to discuss employment, discipline and compensation of public employees and students as per Board of Education Policy 0166A and to discuss investigation of charges or complaints against the public employee, official or student per Board of Education Policy 0166B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, second. Any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call roll.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Board is in executive session. Thank you. Is the board reconvening at 8:30? Mr. Aho, please call roll.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Reason for reconvening is we needed to amend reason for going into executive session. So with that being said, I will make a motion at 8:31 that the Board of Education enters into an executive session to discuss employment, discipline and compensation of public employees and students as per Board of Education Policy 0166A, to discuss investigation of charges or complaints against the public employee, official or student per Board of Education Policy 0166B, and to discuss pending or imminent legal action per Board of Education Policy 0166D. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
The board is now in executive session. Thank you.
Go back. You just amended it. Yeah, we're good. Yeah, we're good.